...step, but there were issues after the fact. Certainly, the slope and managing stormwater became a big issue for designers.
But I'm missing that kind of, you know, so even in East, you know, East Village, three hundred thousand, um, you know, land prices have probably, no, I don't know.
I don't think it's an effort.
I think it's probably.
It's on where encountered.
You know, your taxes are going to be.
So I think also the idea of having a place for empty nesters to move to, to then free up your houses.
I think Pete's right. It's gonna be, it's gonna have three hundred, three hundred per square foot.
Fifty-five and over, yeah, right. Fifty-five and over community back in the day, we had all of it.
It's the school problem.
Yeah, we have a few, we have a few large ones we do. In general, we have a population that is moving into that age group that far exceeds the supply of those who are still young. So there is a need for more of that downsized ability. I honestly think one of the things that I like about the cottage zoning is that it puts forward a scenario where you're more likely to have smaller one level living for people as they age.
I also want to ask that question.
Um, that I think ends up being a large problem for people as they age in their homes today is most of the time people have stairways up and down. If their opportunity is to have these things be developed at a single level, that actually might be something that people would have an interest in seeing because accessibility for them improves. Are you making a face?
That's true.
I guess I misunderstood the goal of this, right? Like, are we building a bunch of little cute developments or will we be looking at have a summer or winter home or a summer home here and a winter home down south? Or are we trying to get more infill and people or community that can have a rest of their life there? I guess I was.
I guess here's what I tell you. So when, when we're in, when our, when we are in our housing world in general, we have a couple of goals and those are that, right? We have a goal to bring down, to try and bring down the affordability, improve the affordability of units. We also have a desire to make sure that the shape of units we have meets the needs of our household sizes and the ages of our population too, right? So we want there to be, the thing we keep sort of saying in this project is we want there to be a place for you, for you at all ages of your life regardless of your income. Right? That's our, that's our gold standard, right? So some of it is diversity of housing sizes and shapes for the household size changes.
Right.
For millennials who have smaller families, for boomers who are empty nesters. Another goal, separate goal, is to improve the affordability naturally occurring, right? Which was sort of a hope of the cottage zoning is that we would get to a more naturally occurring affordable because of the density allowed on them. And figure out a way to better towards a restricted unit system, right? So we have a handful of things we're trying to, to tackle in a Peterborough place.
So, I mean, are, I'm wondering if there's a, you know, that maybe if we, we don't need to be looking at one size fits all, that maybe some of these products we use really are the duplexes that are, you know, a little less expensive because you have shared walls and, you know, that either they're mixed in or they are, um, other ones. You know, but just to be able to really try to bring down the sort of the cost. I think that it's, because if you want to do a boat end, you bring down the affordability, but if you really want to bring it down to, you know, my, you know, I, I was astonished by, you know, the move that she said the other day, how much affordable the minutes. Oh, okay, she was like, well, I was, two hundred and fifty or three hundred, but market rates are two hundred and fifty, three hundred. So I think we just have to do a thing about, you know, build some of these. Again, maybe it's different kinds of neighborhoods for different uses. It's not one thing or two. But I'm going to go to asking ourselves that question, these old cottages, as providing some of these houses, you know, cottages. But even when we talk about infill, we wanted infill to reduce the cost, more units, you know, so again, that it's all going to affordable, so. I'm looking at this, this whole reason behind some of this cottage design is the affordability.
You know, which now is going to be talked about that whole, you know, income, like, half that we're not going to fix is way off, right? So these baby boomers that are now downsizing, their kids are gone, and they go to retire, and they make no income anymore, but they have much money in the bank, look like they can afford the low, like, the hell, my housing.
It's kind of defeat the purpose, right?
Well, you know, actually, there are, you know, I, I, there are actually, are some monitoring agents in the state who are trying to, trying to get a little bit of control over assets and where assets fall in, they're on income because they're monitoring, affordable housing generally, monitoring agents, there isn't sort of a standard template that they all follow statewide there. Each one has, they're.
That's a problem in and of itself.
Yeah. Um, but there are some monitoring agents who do actually look at things like if you own a large parcel of land somewhere else, they, they, they would actually look at that as negatively counting against your qualification because it's that you have, you actually have the need to be on the looking out. But it depends on who you're monitoring, there isn't a standard to practice on it. So, yeah, depending on who you have the, the opportunity to use that is, is present and different.
Okay, so getting back to where we're at here, we were still looking at the maximum units. We made a little bit of, so I think that I heard Andy say, let's not go below five for this piece in, uh.
Percentage.
Yeah, percentage.
All right, we were in dimensional requirements, right? So you can do this on individual lots, single lots, so each one could have its own lot. You could do it as a subdivision in a sense, or you could do it as, right, condominium style development. You could also probably, actually, something that's sort of sound like here, you could also really do this in a rental scenario as well. Um, there's an idea in here that any detached structures because of the proportion of the sizes of the lots need to be shared resources, right? That there isn't an individual garage, there may be a carriage house garage for units and not that each one has, is allowed to have their own accessory structures, for example, that a shed is, or a, a shed will serve for development as opposed to, to, you know, to seek without, um, you have all the units that are coming before it and it's not starting to feel like a place that evolves over time the way we've seen some of the coastal immunity areas evolve over time. Right? Those, those change, a lot of people add individual sheds, essentially, to help.
Along those lines, one thing that popped into my head when I was reading through this is if they're gonna have like a shared garage or carport or something like that, encouraging it to be solar and having that solar perhaps help power the.
Elise, when you think about that, Tom, do you think about that specifically being on accessory buildings or do you think about, are you, I'm wondering, I think my question really is for you, do you want to try and incentivize solar use or promote solar use in the development period or on garages?
Both. I mean, why not? Yeah, but, um, but I was specifically picturing a solar carport too. Went to, I saw another one up close and personal behind the vets hospital in East Greenwich and had the, you know, they have the big parking lot behind and they have big solar carport over part of the parking lot and it's helping to power the, the business and people like to park under it in the summer.
Yeah.
And in the winter.
So, so a thing is, um, one, the, I'm gonna give you the lowest level, um, uh, bring that wider. One, we just listed here explicitly, right? Solar carports. Um, or solar canopies, sort of, like, we'll.
Incorporating solar somewhere.
Yep.
Just encouraging it, incentivizing it even, not necessarily requiring it.
And so that is, I think, sort of, Elise, is how, what does it mean to, I mean, how do you honestly incentivize something? Right? How do you, how do you honestly say, how do you honestly tell somebody you would be better suited to put solar on because you will receive some benefit? At the end of the day, I think we have to provide a benefit for the solar.
Right.
For it to be something that we do more than just say, we would like you to incorporate solar as, as we would everywhere.
You just park. I was thinking, thinking some sort of parking, just parking, you know, solar.
So, I think it goes back to the overlay discussion. We gotta be careful that we don't overcomplicate it. Great idea, but there's already incentives. If you want to do solar, there's incentives to do solar. And there's nothing to do with your lot or what you're doing, you know, if you want to go green, Joe is telling me, so several of his properties and several years is, is good. So I think, yeah, I agree with Kayla. It's difficult to incent something really, you know, control or you don't have incentive to give. And tying it to the math, that's a squishy, so.
I mean, I, I think if you want to do it, place to do it is in the section on solar. Don't limit it to this. It shouldn't really matter whether it's green or not. And to answer your other question, how do you incentivize? The first thing to do to incentivize something is make it permitted by right. Don't require a, don't require a land development project, don't, if it's small, don't even require a development plan review, make it permitted. That is the simplest way to incentivize, if you want. But in my view, you know, is any accessory solar pan, that's just providing the needs for the use of that law. If it's up on a roof, it should be something that is part of that, permitted by right. Um, you know, you might have, um, if you start dealing with ground mounted, okay, then we're gonna start dealing with percentages of lot coverage and stuff like that. But if it's on a roof that's serving a function as a roof, you know, we don't want, we don't want a, we don't want a little cottage with a five car carport and a solar panel.
We were talking about having a garage or a structure serving the entire.
So, I mean, I don't think you'd want to get into it in this about the solar, if you really want it, to make sure, I haven't looked at solar in a while, but let's make sure that we.
Our, yep, our most recent pass on it got us there.
Okay.
To, anything on a roof is always accessory, always by right.
Just a thought.
About eighteen feet or tiny, or second floor, yeah. No, no.
And in particular, we mentioned in another section.
Yeah, we're too sorry, huh? Second floor, huh?
Yeah, right. Right, and number five of them.
Curving, varying roof shapes or gables, so when you start bringing various roof shapes, you start getting, I mean, so you hear it, eighteen foot becomes a problem.
Nine hundred plus three fifty is twelve.
Yeah, or builder at the end of the table. Meaningfully to get two stories? What are we talking about for height of that building?
That would include a cottage.
Yeah, that's right.
Something with a, something.
So what did we come up with in the, uh, speaking about that area?
It's like, uh, four to five. And I keep going back to both water village, because, or, you know, part of that, we, I brought this up during the building, I, I was actually, also, parcels and breakwater building, controlled by, I don't know, situation, but, you know, we could have that on one story, but if we break it up by, you know, six, four, split, it's, I mean, it's an actual great, um, if we have that much, question, it's, 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 well, we saw in, we were committed with that, it really changed, you know, they, they had to get creative, you know, they were like, I think those things are, are, a great example of this, this is a, this is, this is, I'm trying to look at, those are, particularly the newer developments where they, 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 they have a brain structure.
How do we feel about the twelve hundred square foot size area in general?
Where does it come from?
Honestly, I've been, I was looking at a lot of, it, it seems to be, we have.
Other ordinances.
Other ordinances. It, it comes up in Delaware, it comes up in Oregon, it comes, it comes up across the board as this twelve hundred seeming like some sort of magic number that either somebody, planners being planners, either somebody picked and everyone else followed suit or was.
Some weird multiple of four.
Right, yeah. I'm trying to remember green, you know, the development in Greenwich, remember if there was a thousand.
I think it was a thousand, I think it was more.
Yeah.
And they're for.
They're one force.
Which I'm not, I'm not against twelve.
Eight hundred.
What are they?
Eight hundred and eight.
Really?
It's one of.
So those are the ones in East Greenwich that are selling.
Two.
There's one in Tiverton and there's another one that was being built last year.
I'll tell you, it's hard.
Bathroom.
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 Kitchen. Space is tight.
Twelve hundred?
Oh, we need, yeah.
It's gonna say twelve hundred or something.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
My house is twelve hundred, I was just making up, and, yeah, it's too bad, too bad, dead living room.
Jen.
Did it work?
Four hundred.
Yeah. Well, it is, honestly, west really, it is, right? Would be not a very good place. Um, okay. Any other pieces in dimensional requirements people sort of have pulled out of as interest or thoughts on?
Do you like, makes more sense than trying to make, make it, you know, nine hundred and three hundred or?
Right, okay.
Decide.
Right.
Well, it's in the, the, the sizes up there.
Right.
But do you, but it, it's a minimum footprint, so no building footprint, excluding any enclosed porch area shall exceed whatever, nine hundred square feet or whatever, you know, put in.
So if they want to build a nine hundred square foot single floor.
The way it reads now.
Doesn't have to have any second story at all.
Just be it.
Just be it.
Right. We switch that to go in sort of a breakwater village mindset with like a, basically with a lot cover, right? Right? With the size of your building being related to your cottage lot size and then splitting it versus a second story. Um, that might, we may actually see that change a little bit. There's, there's a place where, I can see a place where you can basically have your floor area ratio for your footprint be a size that you might have wanted to come forward for you in two stories, right? As opposed to one, you don't want to see it stand out or you want it to go up instead. But I think that the, there's, there's a piece where somebody, where the designer of the project should be getting for these pieces, right? And to the point that there should be some units that are accessible for people with mobility issues and some that may have a second story, there's, there's a benefit in diversity in the shapes of these things, so potentially bring that over work. We'll, we'll look at that, we'll look at the height piece in here as well, um, seeing that's.
And we know from our building height discussions that architects do not like to be overly constrained. No, they do not.
They're creative, they have too many restraints, right?
That's right.
Hundred square foot.
If you get too creative. Um, so if we go into common open space now, into section G, right? Um, a minimum of two hundred and fifty square feet of common open space shall be provided per dwelling, however, not less than three thousand square feet of common area shall be provided regardless of the number of dwellings.
Back, back to the, to my dwellings.
Yeah.
Six.
Like if it's, I, I, so my margin note numbers ran it through at six, right? And at two hundred and fifty square feet at six gives you fifteen thousand square feet of open space. We save the minimum actually twice that. When we're on small lots, we're, we're gonna find that to be something where the drawings we can sketch up, if you, if you hold to the three thousand square foot minimum, you're gonna yield a very different result. That, I hon, I honestly think we might, that three thousand number, for small ones, maybe two hundred, it's just in general.
Should it be a percentage? Because the pers, some, somehow, because the percentage would take us to a very size that, right?
Like a percentage of the lot area?
Yeah.
Yeah.
That is one way to do it.
What's the minimum that's usable for anything? Like a picnic table or a small playground structure or swing set or something?
Right. This is developable, I mean, it's land, that's not wet ones.
Right.
Usable, right? So we should just be clear that it's usable, right?
Yeah, maybe there's, yeah, we should, we should, we should, we should, is there a point where it's possible, we should have a project, do we, do we want the project anyway?
The whole idea is to have that central open space, I mean, that's what makes it the, the village.
Otherwise, you might as well just build an apartment complex.
Right.
Which is a different tool.
You have them all facing the park?
Like, is there a provision to have a waiver in here in a situation like that?
What is on open space already?
I didn't have open spaces, I'm gonna.
I, I protect open spaces. Yeah. Which, we can look at, we can look at. Which would be something you would want to be, in your subdivision relationships and not as over, that's if you want the board, that, that grant waiver, right? Have a seat at that. So that's a good one. Honestly, it's helpful. I'll tell you guys, but it's helpful that, I know that this is sort of a zoo of, that meetings are kind of just all over, they're batting around on this, but what's helpful about it to me is it helps me make sure we ask the right questions of the community on the nineteenth, so that when we circle back to this all, we can have some information put together along the areas of interest for you guys and not us sinking a bunch of time into a direction that is, that I don't look concerned, right? Um, so, thank you.
Just having a planned view of some examples would be hugely.
Yeah, and I.
Everybody, yeah. Looking at this number six, stormwater management, not being a common space. Except for worst swells or other, so I'm just trying to imagine, so if you have a drainage swale today, you know, in my office, it was all wet, so, which I agree, you know, so, but it's like, common space or not, so.
It says except for swells. Worst swells or other natural conveying structures are included in the designs. You could use that as a.
But that's what I'm wondering though, so if it's always rain, nobody could walk in the grass.
Exactly.
But what if it's a beautiful rain garden with native plants in it? And it's a garden feature.
Temporarily have water.
But it also depends on the situation. If you have a bunch of areas that are carved out that are filled with stone and those are your stormwater management areas, I don't think that should be considered as an open space, you know, you have trenches.
And some of that you see on the Green Street.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, if they, they take water in the parking areas, yeah.
So here's an interesting bit for you all. You know that today, your open space in FDRP is, any areas you put stormwater in don't count for your, you have, um, open space area, like, you're gonna. Stormwater, for sure, it can, but we do not count that area towards your open space conservation. Um, and so, on this, I actually, I had a circle on that one too, on number six, and my thought, my thought on it was that if, if we are going to say it's okay to have the stormwater in your open space, and the open space is small, that, one, you either need to have a very clear enough vision for your, an open space needs to be presented that identifies.
Why it's still.
Exactly. What the, what the public amenity is of having that, right? And which may.
Way of pushing.
And it cannot be the sole use of it, right? There's a proportionality there that needs to be, you still have a space that is meaningful, you still could go out and use the picnic area, right? It's not that the picnic area also happens to be the stormwater feature, maybe it's beside it and potentially if it's serving a benefit of informing the residents about the importance of stormwater management and what a proper system is, maybe that's something where you would say, okay, yeah, that could be in here, right? But I think that there, I think there's detail that we would want to hash out around when the stormwater can be part of that and when it can't, because it is a very small site and already, even on large sites, we tend to discredit people's stormwater. Cottage building design standards, to Andy's point, this is sort of the meat of the matter when it comes to cottage zoning. Basically, this puts forward everybody a, a long list of things you may do and asks you to do a certain number of them, so it's maybe for the children's story, this is the most, to choose your own adventure and building, or I would like this, I would like that, I would like this, I would not let you deal with, they would, or not would you do this.
But we had talked about, you know, where it says same combination of building elements shall not be repeated. Um, I mean, there was that whole discussion we had had at a previous meeting about, um, okay, we don't want them all to be identical, but you want them to be harmonious, right?
Yes.
You don't want to have, oh, colonial, you know, mid-century modern, you know, Victorian and have it just, you know, be all over the place. You want them to be, you know, harmonious, yeah.
Well, it goes back to the Peace Dale conversation, the four houses.
Right.
They're all identical, they're just painted different. Color schemes are different.
But you can do things like, you know, if you, if there's a bay window, you know, have it on one side on one house and the next house have it be on a different side or, you know, there's a dorm or have it, you know, you know, even just orienting that a little bit.
So that wouldn't pass, I'm, I'm here this way.
I'm good, this it wouldn't, yeah, and we liked it, we liked that.
Right. So I, I don't, I didn't necessarily agree with that statement because I think there needs to be.
You could do those.
I just don't, I mean, I, I get that, I don't know how you put that in words, you know, maybe that wasn't asked in order, or something like that, I'm sorry, what's the term to run it is, but I think, you know, some of these restrictions, you know, this is like vinyl, I mean, these situations are prohibited, that's silly, some of those products are basically, you know, that, that.
Yeah, they have these vinyl shingles now that unless.
Do you walk up to it and tap it?
And they're more expensive sometimes.
Yeah, right. I mean, I was gonna say the four, and the cementations product, we're talking about fire.
Right.
I think so, down there, it's, 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 it's great.
We could always invite an architect to our next workshop.
But I mean, especially if we wanna talk about keeping things affordable. I don't think we wanna restrict people from having to use clavars and cedar shakes necessarily.
Yeah, from what I'm understanding, this isn't saying you can't do vinyls, if you pick one of these five in that situation. I, I don't think that, that's a good, like, you know, I don't, that should be a problem, it's future, it's future, I like the idea of giving you an option to pick mine, and maybe you have some variety, but, um, I just, yeah, try, obviously, try to control price if possible, for some of those types of products.
So perhaps we could also use some of the terms mentioned tonight, variety, but with a common theme, harmonious.
I think, I thought, and I don't know how we do this, right? Like, that's the developer's worst, or developer's worst nightmare, like these terms, I don't really mean anything, they mean harmonious, but all of us, that means something very different. So, I think if we wanna promote these projects, we have to make it very clean, black and white, so people can see the opportunity, get in, and add terminology, and maybe an architect has that terminology, you know, we don't wanna have it where someone else does.
We want it to be that way. We don't have any room, we don't really have any room for suspicion, right?
Right, and then I guess we'll move back to incentive, maybe we ask the developers what they would really want out of it, and then maybe promote, like, what we want, and they're kinda getting that. They're gonna be the ones, you know, all the goals, and they want to make their properties, so we should understand that. Looks like, to. Definitely do what we want, and obviously, if you do this, then, since you want. He's just an easy. He'd be willing to tell you what they're looking for, and, and he's talking about this. Other projects, so.
So, I'm gonna play devil's advocate for a second, because I'm talking, Peter, and thinking of developments, in and around South Kingsdale, that we approved, where the exterior are pretty uniform. I mean, particularly if you go North Road, heading towards exit, on the left-hand side, they're uniformed buildings, every one, and they're all painted the same color, green. And I think the Brandy line, off one thirty-eight, that we approved, and it's uniform. And they may, they may be interiors different, and they have two or three models to the interior, but the exterior is uniform. They sell.
They make me standing.
The, the ones at, um, North Road, yes, Brandy line, they're, I can't remember. Yeah, but they're, I think they're uniformed.
I would tell you, the developers would love the idea of.
That's, that's.
Same plan.
Somebody doesn't say there's only one house or two houses available, but I want that, I want that design, yeah. So, yeah, we get back into that, where we're working on the waterfront design. One, one was suggesting led to another, led to another, and we had a long list.
Look at the plans, that they have entire books of plans, and often, they're just variations on a basic idea. So that might lend itself well to some of this.
You might be better suited to see this list become a bit more, this list, to me, there's two things that happen with this list. One, we establish some, like, wide-ranging requirements, right? They must be different sizes, they must be this, and then we have, like, minor design features in it, right? And they're mixed beside each other, right? In the same, like, in the same bullet points where we're saying, the elevation and size must have variety to it, we're saying, or, and you could have dormers or trellis. Those, to me, seem like very different things to say, right? And the conversation around the table sounds to me more like, we're okay with uniformity in the general design, but we'd like to see variation in the minor features. And so maybe this variety in building design becomes a piece where we more talk about cohesiveness within the development as a general practice and variation in the features, and we have this list boiled down a bit to being all just specific minor features.
You know, one thing now you see that you could have, like, different, like, options, right? Like, there are, the building is, you have ten options or five options, and one may be a dormer, or a porch, or whatever. The bigger ones, and you have to pick two or three of those, and then there's the lesser ones, like these smaller, you know.
Color of the house.
Yeah, then maybe there's an opportunity for someone to have more freedom with design, but we're incentivizing that we don't wanna box.
Right, maybe we don't care if your window has visible trim and mullens to it, if, for example, you are giving us this other kind of.
And I think that's.
So maybe we break this into a, like, a multi-tiered, or a column A, column B style.
Some of the ordinance do state that. Lessons learned from the building height. Steve.
I just wanna remind people, it's twenty after eight, we're still, like, three quarters through, I don't know, I don't know if you wanna come to do, or do you wanna?
I think that fence thing, I think that was silly, like, it's a damn house.
Yeah.
It has to be naturally tuned.
The height thing to the fences, how do people feel about the height thing to the fences? I mean, the purpose of it, I think, is that you're gonna have such small lots, you, the purpose is that you want them to be neighborhood-looking and not.
I get it.
Like San Diego.
Basically, we don't want people to put, uh, privacy fences around their teeny-tiny units. I, I, I'm generally supportive of that concept, I think it sort of goes to the, it should be community spaces, and we need to kinda buy into that.
They just need to keep the woodchuck out of the tomatoes, basically.
I'm just thinking of something that was. You know, so, are these fences, and I, I don't know what these are, but are they super, or are they?
You get three feet, right?
Oh, that's true, it doesn't matter pretty much. Doesn't matter if it's a.
So forth versus spaces. Like a picket fence versus a.
Yeah, it doesn't matter three feet.
Three feet, you can see all.
And I think encouraging landscaping to delineate certain spaces, but still allow an openness.
I'm in favor of spending ten more minutes on this, because some of the.
Parking, we talked about, um, this has a minimum of one point five space, parking spaces per dwelling unit. Well, a half a space, the idea is, is that you're, you don't park. The idea on these is that you don't park beside your unit. You park in a, so when you, you have to think about it as the average.
It's the law of averages, so I only have one car, but you have two.
Not one and a half for one is really the.
Right.
Um, is that they, they need to be basically, that you're having a parking, you're having parking areas, and that's why, that's why the point five isn't the same snap that would be on in your individual lot.
So we're talking about accessibility, we're gonna be asking people to park away from their home, okay? Just behind, just behind.
Functionally, a lot of times, they end up being an alley, like, a lot of times, we're kind of seeing is a cottage development where there's sort of two lines facing each other, either like a walkway space interior, and then one sort of missing tooth of a unit, and then a open space, sort of gathering area, and then you see the parking spaces coming in in alleyways behind the unit.
Again, if you look at the Green Street development, yeah, same way.
And if you have somebody who has accessibility issues, even if they have two cars, they don't necessarily have to have both cars parked at their home, they can have one parked in that kinda community area, and then one parked.
This is one, I think, we have an opportunity to try and do something better with parking. I, I actually wrote here, this is one where I think you would, I would like us to think about a parking maximum on these.
Yes.
I would, I think that that is, this is a, this is a place where presumably, you may, somebody who came in and said, I, I'm gonna give you three parking spaces for every unit, drastically changes the feel of that development. This is one where we're gonna actually think about a maximum on parking, too. I also think that one point five per unit maybe can come down to one in some areas, particularly if there is on-street parking allowed in that area. That's one thing I think about South Kingsdale sometimes, and I, I don't know how to pulse and feeling on this is, but we discourage a lot of on-street parking, and that is one of our best resources for asking people to not make their lots impermeable, is to let them use what we already made space for.
That's great, except during parking bans. And then how does the plow, during parking bans?
During snow snore, storms.
And then the plows gotta get through where you put the cars.
Yep, which is usually, a lot of towns do it by allowing you to park in other spaces, in municipal spaces. You can park at the school lots, you can park at the town hall lot, where you actually, when parking bans, and they, this is, comes, happens up north a lot in downtowns, if you're in a, with a lot of snow, and that is a, that is a tried and true practice up north, is you basically then open up public parking places, and then the plows need to plan according, like, cars all need to be out of the public lots by say, whatever time of the morning.
Because they have support facilities.
Yes, exactly, and it's like a, a play back and forth, and they end up giving.
So would you put a restriction on the number of cars that are allowed, or, or, what you were suggesting?
Let's play. Two spaces per dwelling here.
Well, if they're only, say, if you only give them one parking space, then they can have two.
I think at the end of the day, we, we don't, I don't, I don't particularly wanna see the town enforcing on an individual property owner. I would rather see a permit and amount of parking on the site, and then let them work that through on their own. Um, there's a lot on garage doors, a lot on carports, a lot of this that I think, to be honest with you, I couldn't make heads or tails of it without pictures, and so I, I don't know that I think that that's something we really need to get into tonight without having some photos, um, aside from my takeaway points people have on these parking and orientation pieces. There's a lot about orientation, you guys clearly are reading in there, right, about where your garage doors should or shouldn't be facing. Um, a lot of it sort of aimed at making sure these spaces are designed to promote walkability and integration into their neighborhoods, and not, not to be built with basically a garage structure for the unit facing the road, and you have a private key tucked on.
Are you, are the roads a public?
I think it depends on the size. I think, honestly, you don't necessarily, like, see roads as, or smaller, and the lots, where you see just parking passes, alleyways, door. And roads would get that basically from there.
Right, when you ask, like, the parking area, it's, well, if, if you have stormwater, it's a lot, right, and property, that's gonna have to. Or, or, yeah, you know, the water, the, the sub existence, it's, it's very, it's, it's, it's very important, you know, it's, it's like, um, association.
Absolutely. I'm in area maintenance, this, a lot of this harkens back to what we have in your FDRPs for open space pieces. I agree with Steve, I think it's for another looking back, to tell, I don't, I honestly don't know that our open space. It's always served us. Fairly well at the end of the day, it's on our FDRPs, and so I think with some pieces. Put forward here to say they must always can address these things, right?
Well, in these cases, where the parking areas that are probably gonna be moved, in the long term, just have an order, wow. So, it's, it, it could, it could, it's, I reckon.
Absolutely, they're, right, they're, they need, they're gonna end up needing a homeowners association or a condo association that has the ability to let these to, to have.
So, I, I noticed that we don't have a, anything about roads in here, we want, you know, I'm just thinking of, in one of the other things where we're talking about incentivizing with smaller roads, and, yeah, thinking about the hottest point in our states. So I don't know if we're gonna be, if we're gonna be here for those.
Yeah, I have the, my, my thought on this, honestly, is that. If we're not allowing them on larger lots, people are not. You had, your, your R forty lots came down, you're, you're gonna be putting more, where it's alleys and accessways, you're not gonna be trying to build a forty-foot right-of-way within your parcel, because, because it's.
So then we need something about alleys.
Exactly, so we need, and in here, it talks about alleyways, and it's never defined anywhere, it's never described. Yeah, we need to flush out what those mean, and I think in reality, in practice, is about, yeah, I don't think we actually see roads. I think we need to start figuring out how we define accessways and alleys, right? We do it a little bit in a special management district, so there's some pieces there that, that'll seem familiar from it, but it is a different.
But that would, again, you have, I like, basically, the home, or, or, hours building.
Yeah. Yeah, yep. Right, so we're gonna have to have standards for them, right?
Yeah.
Exactly, alleyways are gonna have to develop their own sort of set of standards.
Okay.
Thank you guys, all right.
Item two, discussion of accessory dwelling unit regulations.
All right, so. How familiar are we all with the, what's the, the work, the Affordable Housing Collaborative, the town manager have been trying to put forward to incentivize accessory dwelling units? I know it was sort of mentioned a, a little bit in our October work session, but that was a little while ago, and I can't recall how much detail was given to it. But so, stage-setting wise, we've got, basically, we're, the Affordable Housing Collaborative is trying to put forward policies to do tax relief for accessory dwelling units, to that development, to incentivize them, um, both for non-restricted ones and for deed-restricted ones, that basically provide a recipe for tax abatement when you develop one of these on your property, period, or if you deed-restrict it to run for the period, and that you have the restrictions. And so, in doing, in their discussions on that, I think it's, I think there's something that I'm gonna be, I think there's something that towns don't do enough, which is, look at the way this, how we already regulate something, and then what all of these things stack up to. So, in one hand, we're sort of working and pushing to incentivize accessory dwelling units to be developed in more places, which make me think it's also a great time to look at what restrictions we have on accessory dwelling units today, figure out what ones we care to keep, serve a valuable purpose, and we need, and where there are some that when we're trying to incentivize these more, we might need to relax or be interested in relaxing as well. So. There are key things, and I'm sort of, from the memo I sent you all, tried to bring to your attention some of the things that I think are odd about our accessory dwelling unit standards and how they sort of functionally act, work on the ground. The first one, and you'll see it really described here in that table on dimensional regulations. We, we really actually tell you, you're basically building a duplex in the R twenty, R thirty, and R ten districts, right? We tell you that, yes, this is an accessory structure, and in any district beyond this, you don't need additional lot area. But in these three, in the smaller zoning districts, we, there's an establishment for additional lot area for them, depending on utilities you have, right? If it's, you have public sewer, then it's, it's an increase. If you do not have public sewer, you have to have enough land to, you have to have twice the amount of land necessary in the zoning district. That seems to me like some. That seems to me like something that isn't gonna perform the way we think when we're wanting to incentivize. Right, you're basically saying you need enough for two lots for it, so then at that point, it's not accessory anymore. And at that point, you might as well go for the duplex or subdivided and put in the other full-size house, right? We, if we want them to fit a niche, which is what accessory dwelling units kind of are, they're, they're a niche solution to me. Then we need to create that as an actual place to be and not, not call it the same as a duplex or a subdivided, which is single-family ones. I don't wanna disregard what sort of the intention to me seems to be in this, which was that in the smaller zoning districts, it asks you to have a little bit more land for it. The question sort of for you all and for us all over the next few months is, is there an amount of extra land we want, period? Or is it something that we're okay with actually becoming our launch, okay?
Okay, if you have sewers.
Right.
It's essentially another.
Yep. And if you didn't have sewers.
It's still essentially.
It would just be the question of whether you have enough room to put a high S D S system.
Right, whether or not you can upsize your subject to have it work.
It doesn't have to be.
Tashed, be separate?
Yeah.
If you have the room on the. With all the setbacks and everything.
It could be, it could be over a garage. It actually could be a garage. Over a garage is an interesting piece. I say over a garage is interesting because then we also keep stacking up all these regulations. We know that an accessory structure is often limited to fifteen feet height. So if you had a garage, you could not in fact put an apartment above the garage. We say that a lot. We like to talk about the apartment above the garage as an accessory dwelling unit. You cannot build that.
So that's another one of those little pieces that we think doesn't really sort of help us incentivize it, right? We actually have this, this other small piece that in functionality, when someone pulls a building from it, it's their first quick stop on it.
So the thought, my thought on that is, I think there's a piece we might wanna look at for saying your accessory structure. If it is going to house, an accessory dwelling unit might wanna be tall enough that you could in fact put the garage above the apartment. If that's the thing we think is reminiscent of the carriage house and the things that we think are suitable for. It may not necessarily be that we want all accessory structures to see the same increase in height up to say twenty feet. It may be that, that it's acceptable to have accessory structures that are twenty feet high. There's two ways we could probably approach that. One would be to just increase the height of the accessory structure, our launch, across everywhere. Or you could just increase it for if it is an accessory apartment, that's what you're going to. But, so there's another piece. So when we're, when we're on the dimensional pieces, it seems like we're okay with the idea. You don't necessarily need additional lean-in for these. You just need to know that you're septic. If you're not on septic, it's gonna work and you have space for it. If you're on sewer, then you should be able to just pull in if you does want. I think we need to look at also allowing the accessory heights to go up so that you're not, we're not painting a picture of something we want someone to develop that they're not meant to.
Like we have the. Incidental. Workshops.
You're building.
And it's a good incentive for the accessory, you know, you're set, you're tied that way, you're right.
So if I have an existing garage and I wanna raise the. It's almost like a, I'm right, this building.
Sitting there.
Yeah.
They'll all be by right of nature.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. The other, and that's sort of the other piece that's in here.
As far as making the building height on your.
Accessory structure.
Higher than it normally would be allowed, because you're putting in.
Yeah, and that's something that we would basically honestly, you'd add a note in the dimensional table. You guys were, were there at the end of the dimensional table, section four oh one on the right, there's, there's actually like a series where we have annotations to it. And there's a list at the end of notations. It's something we would just mark as a notation in there. And then in the accessory dwelling unit section, also sort of like. Wherever you came at, whether you came at it looking for how high can I go with my accessory structure? Or if you came at it saying, I wanna build an accessory apartment now.
Just looking. Your structure. Fifteen feet everywhere?
It is fifteen, it is fifteen feet, Jay's gonna keep me honest. I think it's fifteen feet everywhere until you get to the R eighty district. In the R eighty district, you can go twenty feet. Your accessory structure first can be twenty feet.
Fifteen feet's not very.
You couldn't, even twenty feet's not gonna be enough to put a garage below.
It's a fifteen.
No, you're gonna have to go the same as a two-story, it's gonna be twenty feet, twenty foot.
It's fifteen, that's a, two, R two.
R thirty.
Even as a single-story. You want your floor to be a couple feet above the roof. If they have.
Feelings.
Yeah. So I'm saying, you get up to fifteen and go past it, you're a single-story.
Another thing that I wanted to talk to you guys about is. Right now. I, I would love it if you all could explain to me why we ended up with a special use permit for accessory apartments in the R two hundred. I have, I have a really hard time sort of understanding what, what led us there. And I'm usually pretty good at trying to figure out what, where we, what led us to where we are today and why it would be different.
I think the concern was, the R two hundred are often, you know, the, the more valuable areas and the coastal areas and stuff. I think the thought was that these, there was a real concern that these would just be, end up being the second dwelling unit disguised as an accessory dwelling. It was the extra degree of scrutiny required. I'm not saying it should be kept that way, but I think that's where I came from.
But that is probably what led us to where we are.
Yes, yeah. People were doing it, you know, long green hill in those areas as well. Really just sneaking in another high-end unit and calling it accessory. And there was a recognition that there's not really any good mechanism on controlling who's really living in the accessory. Well, particularly if we allowed anybody to live in it, and not just accessory.
So you're talking about the real coastal areas, that more intelligent areas, developing, yeah, carrying capacity so that it could be allowed.
Right, I look at all of our, our.
Not at, right, not every coastal area, yeah.
Yeah, you grew to.
No, 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 but the green, if you're talking about Green Hill, I mean, what down there is R two hundred?
It's possible, but it could happen. So some of the areas that.
Right, well, that, I was wondering if, I mean, if it's over like a, the G pond or something, I could see being careful. Or if it's huge.
Isn't here about every two years, they have the. I see.
There's an ordinance.
Is it five rooms or three rooms?
It seems a little prejudiced.
If you're in the.
I, I think it should be consistent. As the towns have a hard time enforcing.
They're enforcing.
Yeah, I think they are.
To me, it seems like something that should be, should, it should be like a cross, I, it just seems to me like it should be a cross and board. I, I don't know that I.
Well, what you said to me was coming from you spot on. Brought it back to me too, and we had this discussion. And it really came from, the building official. Saw that happen. And how we went from, originally, it was six hundred square feet. We wanted to go to nine hundred. But the argument was, a lot of, as they were building their, you know, their, their unit. They were putting in a porch, which ultimately saw a top, which ultimately then saw windows put in. And next thing you know, it's part of the house. So the advocacy of going from, that's how we went from nine hundred square feet to seven hundred and fifty square feet. So that if there was a small porch area that was eventually gonna get enclosed, and this is by the building official seeing this firsthand, over and over. We went from nine to seven fifty, so.
What's to prevent that from happening in any, something, so.
I can do an R eighty.
You do that anyway.
I'm looking at a project to put an accessory structure on it right now. Twelve hundred square house. I don't even know about it, you know, I mean. Making assumptions. There's a lot of stuff that they did.
Andy's, well, there's somebody in Tucker Town that will build a new house and wanted an entry, so he said, get a, a complimentary accessory.
It's the one on Tucker Town? It's, yeah, I would, I don't know the guy, but I don't want up near the street.
Yeah.
It's the building near the street.
It wouldn't, it wouldn't be an accessory structure, wouldn't it be allowed?
Yeah, it was allowed, it's accessory.
Well, I think it comes back to what you were saying. You're, you're not having, can't put a second floor in a garage. And that's where it would often be a rec room or something in a garage, but so maybe. It's a portion of the time, but I think unfortunately, I sort of gave that opportunity to add something to it. I understand that. We're just gonna have.
So you're talking about asking accessory dwelling units to have a fourth?
I'm just saying that. The option two, it says that, you know, the seven hundred and fifty square feet guy would be included in that, starting to get this all there.
Seven hundred square feet.
Some of that goes back to old Brown's comments, because of middle bridge, you know, some areas in between them. You know, at some point, we were talking about making accessory apartments up to a thousand square feet. He came in and said, what are you? Says some of those condos down there are nine hundred square feet now. If you're letting them double the size of their house, you know.
It's like accessory.
Could you just say that the. Well, I mean, I'm just, so that was just.
I mean, I think that there's some existing language. I believe there's an existing language where the accessory dwelling unit is not supposed to look like you're living here.
Supposed to appear subordinate to.
Subordinate or is it?
Subordinate.
There is a language in there.
Going back to the, you know, it's really how it ends. Accessory apartments is accessory.
No, it can be, it can be freestanding, absolutely, but it's gotta be tied to the main dwelling.
Same, same household.
Exactly. This is one law.
So, it's, I think it's, I think it's the terminology, accessory dwelling units have been an evolution over time. They're, they started largely as family, accessory family dwelling unit, except family apartments. There's, there's sort of odd like evolution of it over time. Accessory dwelling unit right now is the term that's sort of more encompassing. So I think when the, yeah, the, like the title to five oh three point two accessory apartments should just be accessory dwelling.
But currently, the owner has to live in one of the structures at least six or nine months here, right?
Yeah, and so that's in, that is another one that I think we may want to discuss further. I say that because discussing it with Wayne, our zoning enforcement officer. Wayne said, I'm not sure who and how this is ever gonna be monitored in perpetuity and kept up with from an enforcement point of view. This is an enforcement nightmare for us, that there's an affidavit in the land evidence record. How do I find, they reported the affidavit saying they would live there six months out of the year out of the due. How do I know whether or not they actually are or actually aren't? And will I be in the middle of the neighborhood argument about, I don't think they're there six months, either we're there six months.
And, and if they can't live there for some reason, what are they gonna do, leave it vacant? That's not good either, you don't want that, you know?
I understand that, like, when I read that, I can see that the intention was that these should, was for this to not become sort of two rental properties on a site, right? I think at the end of the day, we need to figure out which is the, what is the sort of bigger concern? What is the bigger impact? As it's. Yeah.
Well, what it doesn't, I mean, I guess, does it matter?
Does it matter? I think that's really my, my question is, how, how mu, how much does that matter? Whether or not the property owner lives on that property six months out of the year or not?
The other question was, going back to the, one thing with the area piece. I was thinking about U R I students too. Well, U R I students, because. No, I mean, in the principal and the accessory. Because now the landlord, who knows where the landlord is and. There's enough words to.
But the U R I students, because they're unrelated. The ordinance requires, I thought they have to come in every year.
They do, they need a special year.
They need a special year, so it's annually approved.
It's with. They have to prove it, so the neighbors are gonna.
They gotta remember.
They have to know, I don't think it's every year, but it's every few years you have to remember. Maybe a couple, it might be three years.
So there's a little bit of self-policing.
I mean, I don't think, I think it's very difficult to enforce five, ten years after it's built. But I mean, there is a possibility of first getting the permit. So there is a little bit there that the owner of the property is living there when they pull the permit or build a structure. But again, five years, ten years, I don't know how you enforce it.
Now, again, you gotta.
Pass the Senate today.
Oh, really?
Yes. They happened to be there, just in another.
For Arabs?
Yes.
Really?
No, for the South Kingstown.
Yay. But I think that the premise of having the owner on-site is, even if it down the road becomes less enforceable.
Space.
Why not just have? Two for. I mean, if it's that frequent.
I mean, I, I think it's good to have the owner. Again, I don't think it's necessarily possible five, ten years down the road, but I think it does provide a little bit of. Otherwise, you're just talking about a rental unit. You're kinda getting away from, you know, just going to multifamily housing, so. You want no additional.
That's right.
You're talking in, you know, allowed by right, in these only district.
And perhaps there needs to be criteria for what subordinate actually means.
In terms of, like, what, any, any thoughts?
Relationship between.
Because subordinate means lesser than inferior to, and so I think it's, right now it's the size and, right, the size of the, this area you can have. And the fact that it needs to be sort of tacked on to your other, exactly, it needs to be smaller, either attached to your building or on one of your accessories.
Can it not be between the main building and the street?
There is actually, I think we do have a restriction on accessory structures.
It can't be. Supposed to be, I don't think there's supposed to be any closure to it.
Yeah, your accessory structure.
You can't be in the front.
So that's sort of how subordinate right now, if there are other pieces to that, to think about what else that might be. Joe, I think my only thing I'm, I'm gonna put, not in concept on the owner occupancy piece, but I'm gonna push on it in practicality. Which is, I don't even think that it's a five-year down the road concern. I think what I'm hearing from Wayne is it's a six months down the road. I don't know how I'm, my staff is functionally enforcing that. And so we might have to think about if there's a different way, if that is like an important value for us, that there is a property owner always living on these sites. And not rentals in both of the sites, how we do that in a way that we can actually enforce. Because Wayne's piece on it right now is, yes, that gets recorded and I can ensure on day one that that got recorded. But on day one hundred and eighty-nine, I haven't counted how many days they actually, that property owner was there, or in Florida, or in Italy, or wherever. And so it's like, it's not even a five, ten year. And so it's like, it's not even a five, ten years for him. It's from him, from him, it's from the point of it being.
But the owner would have to move out. So you'd have to, it's when they initially get the permit, they have the, the, the structure.
They'd have to, yeah, they'd have to sign, basically, they'd have to.
Means nobody else can be living.
Put an affidavit in there saying that they reside in the property for at least six months out of.
How does the state know that snowbirds aren't here? Six months, more than six months.
It's using the. It's in the registration. Said they'll look into credit cards. That's where you're right.
You're buying all your gas in Florida. That's what I've heard.
Oh, yeah, I've heard them trying to monitor.
Monitor your buy, you're buying all your gasoline for your car.
The state only cares about the tax rate.
So on H? Think about how to sort of put it in a way that works, right?
But again, if it's complaint driven, if your neighbor says, you know, "I haven't seen this guy in three years."
Well, yeah, but if there's somebody else living in there, then they become noisy and a problem. And I, I think I have in our own court.
Right.
Will help. Because if it says in the ordinance, you can't rent it out, you have to live there. It would be something that you could do.
It's actually, but you need the, the zoning official needs to provide a baseline for that. Attempt to enforce it, and that's the nightmare.
But, well, no, but if they had college kids in there with a nine month lease. That's pretty obvious right there. They can't leave there six months a year. They've gotta lease out the college kids for nine months. How do you go about, how do you go about proving all that?
The neighbors complain. They have pictures.
They say there's a lease and nine months, and you go back and forth. Can I see your lease?
The college kid piece, like, sort of the, the loud, unruly. We're also, I think, all working at this within a assumption that the property owner lives in the main house.
Does it have to?
They don't, they don't have to, right?
But I have a problem with that.
Like if they, exactly. And so it's almost like, I feel like what I'm sort of hearing around, say, look, if they were in the accessory apartment, it's about the fact that you know that they have enough connection to that property that they have a connection happening on the site, right? It's not necessarily that in their six bedroom home that they be there if they rented that out. That is the problem. It's, it's that you want to make sure that there is an owner presence.
Well, because otherwise you're correcting to, to a rental unit.
Right, and you're just throwing in the towel.
The towel being, that's my question, I think. The towel being, we prefer, I'm, I'm gonna just sort of say this as, as I hear it. The towel being, we prefer owner occupied ret- units to rental units in the town.
That's why.
But that's sort of the fundamental thing I think we're talking around here, right, is.
Maybe, well, it's not, yeah, if you're granted.
If you're gonna enforce it, maybe it's not. That's your, of course, in English, concerned about enforcing whatever the issue is, whether it's loud noises or excessive parking.
You gotta, it's what's the goal, right? Trying to get more people.
Are you the owner or not?
Those rental houses are on single lots. Intensive. We have a product study where we have a bunch of, four different, five different projects on an acre. All of those.
Fifteen of them.
They might be all rented.
It's called FracR.
None of the.
There's a, there's a, I mean, there's a, there's a, there's sort of an, there's a, there's a standard where we try not to regulate the ownership model and occupancy of the unit, right? If you, say you did live on the property, say you found yourself in financial hardship or some scenario where you were unable to be on the property any longer for six months out of the year. I'm aging, I've been, I've put in, I'm living in a nursing home now. I am unable to live on this property for six months out of the year. And I've been told now that, like, my property is out of control and must be sold? That, right, like, we're, when we get into places where we regulate the ownership, we put ourselves in very, like, the occupancy type, whether it is a rental or homeownership, we put ourselves in a strange place on enforcing the rights of a homeowner to sublease, rent their property. Use it as they see. We're, we're in an odd place there.
Saying that we want rental properties, but we don't want apartments, you know, so we're not giving ourselves too much.
Right. And so I think the thing for us to think about on this is what? What were the things we were trying to mitigate with that, right? What were the things that were concerning, right? What I'm hearing about, table about it right now, is we're concerned that if there isn't some sort of steward to the property, that the management of the property, that the use of the property could become more impactful to the neighbors than it should.
Did this pass the law?
Right. We just passed an ordinance.
Sort of noise more.
And we have a.
That's noise, not twenty cars parked along the lawn.
Well, we also require that if you have more than three unrelated people living in that site, you need the special use permit. So do we not trust this, you know what I mean? Do we not trust the special use permit to perform the way it should for household occupancy?
So does that fall for the same thing here? So that if we have a house with accessory unit, that's considered on a household, one household? For the purposes of the ordinance, of the unrelated people living together ordinance on that piece of property?
I think if that, I think that that is a, I honestly think, I think that that might be a more reasonable way to approach how we do it, is to say, "It needs to accommodate all of the tenants." Right? That you're, you can't sort of say, "Well, I have two students in the house and one out there, but I'm not in the household occupancy." Maybe that could be why it could be the property.
Especially.
Is it accessory?
Right, because it's not intended to be a standalone thing that they're, by definition, tied to one.
And what was the basis for this recent change?
To rent.
Oh, then noise.
Or the next. Why isn't it?
It's an acci-.
You have one rental unit, one's accessory to it.
You're allowed by right to build an accessory unit.
I'm really partisan, right.
Either for yourself or a family or.
Right, I think it might tie to specific.
So you granted that by right. But it, it's not really saying, oh, you can have, basically have.
Well, it's limited in size. It's limiting the number of.
But I, but I think part of, part of the issue may be if you want, if not, if one of them isn't owner occupied, then you're gonna let people rent out both of them. Then you have to make sure that you really have the parking security on that. Are you, you're gonna have parking issues.
That's an issue if you rent it out or not.
I think renting it to, I'm just thinking, again, with a cop, when we're a college town, we're, we're just open to a lot more abuse.
What do we have in the parking lot?
Well, I think you only have to have one parking space for an accessory. One per parcel. Assuming there's one person. So you have an accessory apartment. Two people could be living in that accessory, so you have a car.
Yeah, but that's the same, you know, same thing with cars, but I guess cars were a personal.
I think it's okay. Because we have a room standard. Like rooms can be bigger and accommodate two people. In the household occupancy standards, like household occupancy by more than three unrelated persons, you, we have a room, a bedroom size that we say can accommodate one, a bedroom size that can accommodate two. I believe our parking standards carry for occupants of the building.
It says two for principal dwelling, one for accessory apartment.
That's what it says.
So, so I'm talking about the section on household occupancy.
Oh, oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Look at all those things that we try to mitigate and just find out which ones carry forward. Probably most of them will.
Yep.
Because that's what you ended up with. A lot of these accessory are gonna stay within the existing structure. A lot of them may never be in addition. They may just say, "I'm gonna take my house and I'm just gonna take that bedroom over there, put a kitchen there." You know, yeah. And without, and, and I won't even need to change the septic system because I'm not adding any bedrooms. I'm, you know, I used to have a three bedroom, now I have a two bedroom and a one bedroom accessory. You know, so.
I think a lot of this marriage, the work we already did, three hundred and ninety-four, then three, forty people.
I do too. I also think there's another piece to remember, which is that the second you get five parking spaces on a parcel, regardless of the use, we call it a parking lot, you have to have interior perimeter landscaping and all of that. You actually, like, so we do have a piece where if you're, if you're a household occupancy by more than three unrelated persons, it is only the four person household occupancy that does not require you to have your parking area be developed with screening and buffering and landscaping. So it's, it's a narrow margin in there, right? At five, when you come in, we call your parking area a parking lot. We're gonna tell you, you need to landscape around it. Like, we, that, we have some safety mechanisms in place. But this is the URI occupancy.
Is that what it is now?
So in lieu of the owner gaining a lot of, you know, the act of those regulations, you wanna, you wanna.
To look at, to say that if you have an accessory apartment, the resident of that needs to be counted in your occupancy pieces.
Just like.
So that it folds into an ordinance where it happens. And this is the piece, right? We're, this is not our only pass at these, right? We're gonna then, we'll, we'll come back to these with some beat off the bones on them. This gives us some correction on what to, what to wrap up.
So for H, accessory apartment, opposed with an FDRP, cannot count in the computation of dwelling units if therein. Can we include that in the ordinance or permits? That it can't count as the, so that we don't put it into the whole Fieldstone Farm thing again? H. So it's talking about whether the accessory apartment should count in the computation of dwelling units. And we had the whole thing with Fieldstone Farm where they wanted to count the accessory apartments as the. Can, can this be included for the comprehensive lines as well? So can we count it as?
Well, I don't think we had the issue with them. No, we had an issue with that, that they were gonna make up all their, all.
Right, but they were counting them as.
We're okay.
All in one area.
I think we're okay if it was a similar ratio, right?
Well, no, because they're not similar.
Oh, because we ownership.
They wanted them to be all of the affordable units.
Yeah, that's, that's what our issue was, was that all of them were.
Yeah, yeah, functionally, what they were asking for was, they were asking for their, their affordable bonuses and their market rate numbers to all, basically to take all of their full size units as all of the market rate. And capitalize their maximum benefit on that side and then call all of their accessories, the affordable.
Which were allowed by right anyway.
Exactly. Which, to which case, we actually used this in the, we used this, a combination of all of these in that decision on Fieldstone to say, "In fact, you don't need any density relief to develop fifteen affordable accessory apartments. They be permitted by right." Your quest cannot be that which is permitted by right. You need to, if you need a density increase, you need to tie it to an actual increase for the affordable housing development, not something you would be allowed to do by right because of it. But yes, we used it in Fieldstone for that. We will see.
So can we actually put it in the ordinance and make it explicit?
We could.
Because we're putting it in the ordinance and making it explicit for FDRPs. Or it's in the ordinance, for, for FDRPs. I mean, why not spell it out?
Yeah, we don't, we have, we, yes, we can look at that. It's a strange thing to, I have, I have a strange feeling about any time we put any standards in the zoning ordinance specifically comprehensive rules because there's apparently been a requirement to something out there. But we can look at making sure, to be honest with you, I think maybe it's not probably have it in all of this. I'm gonna make a start.
The, the other thing is that under accessory apartments, C, there's a reference to, um, the special use permit and protection of the community's drinking water.
Yeah, I think that ties into, like, it's a hundred and fifty, it's a hundred and fifty dollars. Yeah.
A two hundred.
Yeah, it's a, but it's also related to nearest freshwater wetlands.
Has to, the ISDS has to. If it's in, if it's in this, in the Salt Pond stamp, it's gotta be pumped every three years anyway. And they do send out cars. It's something could consider. Oh, no, they definitely do, because I live in the Salt Pond stamp and I get the cars. Yeah, and they are tracking whether your current, your inspections. Yeah, sure. If you're in the same.
I knew this, it'd be interesting. There was a, these part-time jobs and this full-time job.
Is it just?
Trying to get all that stuff to utilize.
Well, they've definitely done it. It's on the P R letters, so.
They started that, with earlier press, we had a potential issue.
So are garbage disposals allowed in other ISDSs? Don't use it.
I think.
Make sure.
I think that the, the section, those, those standards in section C should just be tied to, if you're over the groundwater protection over, like, district. Not split by zone. For parcels that are over the groundwater are located in the G pod, we would ask for all of these. Because that's what it's about, right? It's about steward, being steward of the groundwater.
But also at some point, when you think about twenty years, thirty years cumulative impact, what are we going to do about the impact to the groundwater overall, whether you're in the G pod or not?
So is that?
I know that's beyond.
That's okay, but, so, so, I mean, I think that that would be in the frame of the accessory dwelling units. That would honestly be a frame of asking whether or not it's any time, it's in the ISDS system, right? Or any time, the GTS system, or some other sort of thing that would ask the judge. It's a less than the impact.
Is there? Something that happens to be asking. I don't know, so. I think, you know, accessory. Protection.
Yeah, that's an idea. A lot of them, the, the, the GTS, the, the light handling us today. And I got it inspected. And it says, "Well, here," and I was, I was, you were wondering, I went, "Oh, you have a company with money." And so now that there's, there's a chance, no one knows that. So maybe this ISDS thing isn't only one. Maybe if you're renting it out, you're, you have more.
But the, but the system is based on a number.
Yeah, the system is sized based on.
But how often do you have to, for this to start? So if you only have two people in a four bedroom, you're not gonna have a whole number of.
Okay, so that's, that's something we'll look at for, keep going.
In all areas.
Yeah, we can look at it either, exactly. And we can sort of figure out within there whether or not we wanna keep it to the G pod, what it would mean to roll it down to any lot service by another GTS. And sort of look at what, what we're. Sort of a slide.
Maybe that it should be, it should be inspected. And then that it's, it shows, you know.
That we have that.
Only in the. And I know where it is.
Never asked me, I've done it voluntarily outside the stamp. So that's, so that's. Let's try to understand it, had it.
That's what, yeah, so we have to go with.
That's what, yeah, so we have to go with one meeting or. Anyway, so I think it's, we need to think about it more than.
Well, it's, it's already an ordinance on the town, you have to, the other, the system, the system, you have to have it come back every three years.
That is a bad, that is a bad ordinance, we both have it actually expected, you don't know what actually is expected, you don't know.
What I'm gonna do is, I'm gonna ask John Chalk to put together a memo for us on our, our current subject framework on what it gets inspected, when, how it is, whether it's just the stamp, whether it's beyond it, what the rotations like.
And what the reality is versus.
And like, in practice, what's happening.
Yes, absolutely.
Also, plus.
Right now, it's when you go to some of the houses, you have to have an inspection.
Which is a different inspection from what the town does.
And D N X. The town doesn't need to do it.
Right, right.
You have to contract.
Has to fill out the paperwork and mail it in.
So the whole reason why you pump septic systems, right, is the size of the tank is based on the whole bedroom shot. So, yeah, the idea is, is that you have forty-eight hours, two hours, two days of suspension time. So if you look at the bedrooms, you look at the number, how much use it has per day, your tank is basically twice that, a little bit more than twice that, so you have two days of suspension time, so there's a lot of suspension before, before it's on the lease deal. What happens is, is as you get solids in the tank, you're, basically your volume's less, so you get less suspension time. So if it's halfway full, you're only gonna get one day of suspension time, it means more solids in the amount of units here. So it's really how, how much solids are in there, how much volume you have to allow that suspension.
Fail, I think it goes back to fail, I think, in the.
Anybody else think on that one? All right, go back to that, another Horstley-Witten Group memo, item number three, discussion of inclusionary zoning regulations.
You guys will probably remember this, I did this, I think, almost a year ago now. So, in my quick top cover memo on this, for you all, I had, I basically put the areas we had, by bullet pointed the seven areas we had talked about prioritizing for changes to this. I now shudder at the realistic piece with which things happen, because I think we initially said, well, what, these should be the things we address immediately, instead of in a year, and now our immediately is a year. So, nevertheless, we sit where we sit, um, so the things we had sort of said a year ago today to focus on were density bonuses, so figuring out what the ratio was of, of market rate incentive lots to the required inclusionary ZOT lots, right? Some towns use one for one, there's, there's some, there's some leeway there to figure out sort of what is the right place, is it, do you need to be giving one unit for one unit, can you be giving one market rate unit for every two affordables, can you be giving the other way around, what, where are we at on that? We, that is gonna be a sort of a, a research piece for us, but, so that is sort of one of the things we talked about moving on a little bit next. Affordability price of units was another one we talked about. This is the idea that for the, for a unit to count, um, in Rhode Island as an affordable unit, can be priced affordable to a household earning a hundred and twenty percent of the area median income. Our zoning ordinance asks you to develop the units at eighty percent of area median income. Some municipalities have actually seen, have been discussing moving that number up for their inclusionary, so there's less of a gap between your comprehensive permit numbers and what's coming in at your by-book developments. Um, basically, if you give it a comprehensive permit at a hundred and twenty, that seems like an easier, more lucrative way to do the development than to play by the rules and come in at eighty. There is another wholly dissenting camp of people on this topic, who, who say, our inclusionary actually is not hitting our, the right people as it is now, we need to be skewing it lower, because those are the people who are needing more. So we actually have, there's sort of two very, there's a lot of different considerations on this. Um, affordability price of units is something that I wanna hear a bit more from the Affordable Housing Collaborative on, and it's something that I wanna sort of try and see if we can get some thoughts out of the community and, and march on it. To get, to get a feeling on sort of what it means to go one direction or another. The other, there's always an option of just leaving it, as it is, I mean.
This is what?
Well, if you were, mine, uh, who is eligible, I mean, how, how do you become eligible to buy a house that you, you know, the D R S, you know, that's eighty percent?
Yeah, so we, we, when, there's, uh, how you would come at it if you were buying the house, and then there's the, how we look at it when we permit them, right? When we permit them, we say, the house must be affordable to a household earning no more than, set that percentage. The percentage is based on area median income, right, anywhere in that window we talked about. When you actually, but it's not, that's not a flat number, this is sort of, I think. Talk around. If you tell me if I get there, if you get to where you want to go with the question. It's not a flat number, the size of your household governs how much income you can have, you can consider it the median income. Median income is not a flat number, it is a number that adjusts for household size. Right. So if you were a one or two-person household with an income at eighty percent of the area median income, your threshold for income to qualify is lower than if you were a five-person household. Your area median income to qualify at eighty for a five-person household is, is a larger number. And so, when we set the prices on buildings, they go by the number of units, there's a practice that goes to basically say, you take the number of the bedrooms in the unit, plus one as the family size, a three-bedroom home, it is affordable to a four-person household at this price point. It is a maximum sales price, so a lot of times, that price that gets set is you cannot sell this for more than eighty percent of the area median income for that sales price, basically, so the number we set on a sales price correlates to the number of bedrooms in that unit, and then, when a family or a household comes in to qualify, they are vetted through on the percentage of their income that goes to, that is available to cover their housing expenses, so there's another sort of set of numbers.
It's usually typically thirty percent.
Yep, which is a thirty percent number, it's sort of affordable, that's a national standard.
Do they have to, are, so, in Alex's, in Alex's houses? If, I have a friend who wants to buy one, do they have to be on a special list to go do it, or it's just open market at that point to be able to say?
Then they'll have to go to the monitoring agent already.
Right, but there's not like the waiting list.
No, no, it's not, it's not like, for example, it's not like a section A voucher program where there is a waitlist of people queued up on them. They, instead, they're, they're mark, they're available marketed, they're marketed, you actually can find them on, honestly, on silverware, you know, and then you can find one that actually has the same restrictions to it. It's just that when you go to purchase the home, you'll work with a monitoring agent to make sure the income qualifications to purchase.
That's funny too, because if you have too much money, you don't qualify, but you know how much money you want to qualify for. It's just, that's a little sweet spot there.
So if there's, there's a two-person household that wants a three-bedroom house, there's still a formula to calculate what that is.
Yeah, there's still a formula that would calculate out what they would be allowed to purchase an affordable unit at, what they, what, what basically the mortgage company and the monitoring agent would consider to be an affordable price to them versus what the price of that home is, and there, there may very well be a gap there. That is a piece that I think, in a, in a portable housing right now, where you see, generally speaking, when we talk about the sales price, we set on these, we tell someone the cap. Very often, that person who is going to fit that exact cap, who's the person who makes exactly eighty percent of the area median income, and has a perfect balance where they can, they're not.
So extended.
Say, other expenses, that they can still have thirty percent of their housing, their income going towards housing. Say, very specific person, if you made seventy-nine percent of area median income, you may not actually find yourself qualified to take on the expense of purchasing that home. I say that largely because when we talk to developers about building them, there is an understanding that oftentimes developers walk away with, which is, I can sell this guaranteed for this amount of money, say it's two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. That is your ceiling, that is not your floor, and that is not the promise of what you're selling. You very well may actually have to see your price come down, you've just only set a ceiling. So if, for example, someone, someone who makes eighty percent of the area median income never shows up to purchase the home, but somebody who makes seventy percent of area median income does, the sale price of that home may actually need to come down to see that unit move off the market, otherwise it will sit vacant, until you find that very specific person who gets that number. So there's a piece we actually need to start talking, this is a little bit of an aside, but we need to start talking with developers about the fact that that is the scenario they're in, not that there is a promise that they will always sell it at that ceiling price, because when they're doing their budgeting on the development of it, they oftentimes are sort of banking on that number, and then in practice, will sit on these units for an amount of time because that specific buyer is not.
Or if that price is too close to the market rate, and somebody doesn't wanna buy it, because what do you wanna buy, a hundred and thirty, a D R S, if the price is close to the set, so. I think one of the biggest problems is, is this is complicated, and they're trying to put something simple on it, I mean, in an ideal case, so, one of my issues when a developer comes is, you know, the whole idea of it being compatible with size and finishes and size and all that type of stuff. If it was about, it was, if they were going to a hundred and twenty percent of the income, then I, I can see that being the case, but if they're gonna go to eighty percent, then I wouldn't necessarily have a problem with the finishes being less, maybe the size being a little smaller. And, you know, it's almost like, it would be nice if you had a sliding scale where if you catered to somebody that's sixty percent, you only have to do one per five or one per ten, and, but if you're gonna do a hundred and twenty, you're gonna have to do a couple per, you know, it would.
It's a good idea.
So, but you don't wanna make it too complicated either, but.
No, but that, that, yeah, exactly, but we, we live in a very complicated world on this, and that would be sort of taking these two pieces on the density bonus and the affordability price and creating a relationship between those two things, right?
Yeah, so they could decide, do I wanna do a couple of these and maybe go a little bit smaller, like, do I wanna?
Like, do, exactly, do I, would I be willing to do?
And, and that might actually make the phasing requirements less burdensome, right, they always just.
It would be, it would be interesting to hear from the builders on that, because, you know, they, they may say, yeah, I may wanna do less, because then I don't have to worry about not selling, I'll definitely sell them, or maybe they'll feel the other way.
I think you guys have a.
Only they just wanna have the flexibility.
Well, it's funny, but Alex made a good point, I missed the last meeting, I just, I forgot to begin, six months ago, when he was in the pre-app, he made a good point about, you know, why he could sell a hundred and twenty percent, couldn't sell the eighty percent, so, and I think, well, sixty percent would probably be even more difficult. And it might not work with inclusionary.
I don't think that's a problem, selling, I think the problem would be build it at a price, sell it at a price.
Yeah.
That's a, that's a, that's a, it's gonna be easier to sell, the cheaper it is, the easier it's gonna be to sell.
We can't expect people to go out of business.
Right, well, that's what I'm saying, maybe if it's a sliding scale, if you do it at a lower price, you don't have to do as many, if you do it at the higher end, maybe, you know, you have to build more.
And to your point, the higher end, the higher income to where delta between.
And somebody's like, they're, they're, they're gonna want it, that's why maybe give the builder flexibility of what he wants to do, build a little more, a little cheaper, build a little less, a little more.
Well, that's another thing.
To spend two years in the.
So much about that.
Do we have the mechanism to even do that?
Well, first of all, the, and again, this would have to probably go to the general assembly, the amount that, that we, the, the annual calculations for South East Town, forty-nine thousand, that's absurd.
Forty-nine thousand more.
Is, is what the, the allowable fee in lieu of would be.
Oh, oh, okay, yeah, fee in lieu of.
Which is not even the cost probably of a lot, let alone building a house.
Send, uh, send house sub, which is, is the reasonable standard, five thousand dollars a lot.
And then to have that two-year restriction by which it needs to be used, it's just unrealistic, if you wanna create this pool, develop affordable housing, you need to have more flexibility than, or it goes back to Rhode Island housing, that's unfair.
Yeah, the cost of develop, the cost of actually developing it, you would need to have such an amount of development happen that you could accrue enough money to actually buy something in three years' time.
That needs to change.
That may have been the original dream of having Rhode Island housing eventually take the money back if the municipalities weren't able to use it.
Okay.
All right, um, so, we talked, another thing we had talked about was, uh, phasing requirements, making those a little bit clearer and far more spelled out proportionally to each other, right, for every X many market rates. Um, and so that was just, that was just codifying the thing that we know needs to be attached, that we realized hasn't been attached as a condition to some pieces, and basically just say they need to keep, you need to keep pace with your affordable unit development and your market rate unit, you don't flush it out enough to really say what that is, and it's a very clear metric to say you can follow away from it. And so we had talked about just making it clearer standards for them, was.
But if we did institute some kind of a sliding scale, as Joe suggested, I think would make the phasing requirements more fair.
Yeah, and the phasing, I mean, if you ended up with a slide, if you end up being able to craft something that works well for like a sliding scale, exactly, you have the phasing, then it's.
Changes depending on how.
Not that I expect.
You got a lot of land, my whole idea of scale, having that way, that can be assessed, like, on a, on a basis or, in a couple of years, so that, when you slide it one way or the other.
That's the.
The whole idea of a sliding scale is try to get stuff that's at the sixty, you get the eighty, you get the hundred, and you wanna meet the, you have these needs, so it would be, it would be creative. It's assessed every couple of years, you say, okay, we're gonna slide it one way or the other, because we wanna encourage more on this, and we want to encourage a little more on that end.
Yeah, right, to not have it be locked permanently in time.
Yeah.
So about thirty years' time, you would make it look like.
Why do we end up with all these types of houses?
Or couldn't you even allow that within a project? Can someone build a sixty?
Percent AMI, eighty, and a one-twenty?
Yeah, no, I'm just saying, whatever, however we, um, structure it, so that, depending on that sliding scale, how you structure it, you could encourage the builder to go more to the sixty, or you could encourage them more to go to the one-twenty, depending on what that scale looked like. I'm just saying, assessing that scale every couple of years, so that you move the encouragement one way or the other, depending on the needs of the community.
Every year, area median income number is by, and that is the number that we're. Right now, our ordinance is law. Right.
Yeah. It's the whole.
Um, we also discussed about more definition of what LMI unit compatibility is.
Compatibility, just, to me, doesn't feel like the right word, are we talking about compatibility or compatibility?
Are we talking about compatibility or compatibility? Because compatibility means, okay, they're all the same style.
We're gonna steal a Chelsea's superdism. Compatible means play nice, plays nice in the sandbox with each other, doesn't mean they're the same. Compatible means, these things can generally work near each other, they're not incompatible with each other.
They're not uniform.
Yep, it is a, it is a very different thing than saying they are similar, they're, they're comparable.
Right. So do we mean compatible or do we mean comparable?
Even.
Not even the outside, I guess you should look something like that, you know, you can't really.
Right. So do we want to define that, because it's a squishy term. When we say, okay, um, it has to cross within ten percent, fifteen percent, twenty percent, whatever was the market rating it was to build. Or has to be within ten percent or twenty percent or whatever the size. Or has to be the same.
If they're trying to build something that's gonna be for sixty percent of income, I don't have any issue with them figuring out how to build it at sixty percent of the cost. You don't want it to be totally.
So let's define.
It's different than design.
So let's define it.
Do that. So I want to do it on a cost basis.
No, but I, I think it's got to fit into the community, it's in the development. It's, the exterior's got to look somewhat similar, so it doesn't say, it's affordable.
And that's what I.
The one built with the bricks, the send the.
Or it's the duplexes, it's, you know, it's, so.
But the, but, you know, you, I, we can't say the inside's got to be the same as, as.
I agree with you.
I don't think we have.
As a fall. Well, I thought at one point, with, with some interpretation of that, that, you know, they had to have the granite countertops.
Well, what's funny is I think we've always sort of acted like the granite countertop switch alone is what's gonna make that unit a formal. Right, that the fixtures inside are gonna be enough to make up the difference in between the costs of those. And, um.
The kitchens and bathrooms. Have a lot of the cost gone. So, you know.
So maybe that's not a long, yeah.
So maybe more of a reference to not only location within the site, but exterior develops.
Well, you know, part of the, the.
Shpak.
People don't want to live next to a low modern home house, so if they, if they don't look similar, yeah.
There's, there's some pieces, I mean, there's, there's things we can put in here that, that just make it a little bit clearer. It's a trump, like number of. There are ways that sort of, there are things that come up, I'm thinking, I'm giving you guys a example of something that's been kicking around downstairs, so, um, the development out on Route Two, uh, to which his development, where he came in to ask for some relief on the affordability prices of those. There's somebody building those units. And the question that came in was, how similar does it have to be to be similar? If I, if I couldn't build the two-car garage attached to this for the cost, and instead, but I could instead do a one-car garage, would that be okay? Those are the levels of questions that are actually coming into the office downstairs with people making appointments to come in and say, I don't understand what it means to be compatible, and I don't know what your count standard is gonna be. Is it that I need to be building a two-story home beside a two-story home? Is it that it needs to have a two-car garage if all of the other market rate units in that development have a two-car garage? It was an honest question put to me a few weeks ago, if I had a one-car garage, would I be okay? I said, if you didn't have a garage, I think you'd be okay. But so there's, there's sort of, that's, the thought is that there's things we can do to add to that that don't mean you need to make an appointment downstairs to get a question, to get Kayla's opinion on it, that we could actually just put there so people knew what we were saying. Right, was, was it about the number of veterans and the sizes? Does, can that change if you're talking about a different, really different.
It has to be a single family.
Not a duplex, but it doesn't need to be. But if duplexes are proposed.
Twenty percent smaller.
Mix, right, exactly, it can be a degree smaller to some level. It's starting to put a little bit more flushing out for somebody so they see what that is.
Because honestly, you can make it a house.
Twenty percent smaller than the house next to it.
So that. Nobody's ever gonna know from the street. Maybe you don't make it as. Fifteen, I'm just pulling a number out of the air for the sake of argument. But I mean, you don't make it as deep, but from the front, it's like the, the trick they pulled with the cereal boxes, right, to make them twenty percent smaller, they're just not that deep anymore, they're that deep. Looking at the, I know, but looking at the shelf, you can't tell, right? And there would certainly be more of a similarity than there would between a duplex and a.
Right, yeah. Right, and things like at least saying, like, if you're proposing a mix of duplex and single-family homes, your affordable units need to also be a mix of duplexes and brick-and-ivans, right? That your accessory structures don't necessarily need to be the same.
Do we get into? Somewhere from.
Yeah, because you put electric heat in the house, because it's cheaper to install than you want to. Staying there.
Yeah, but it was. That's a choi, that's a choice that we don't make.
That was. Some high efficiency propane.
If it drove the cost on the. I would actually come up with a plan with, with the sales prices. They don't, they do on the rentals.
If you're a rental, if you're a rental affordable unit, your utilities, your feet of that structure counts in it, if you own the home, we don't care. You own the home, you're on your own. Sure.
I don't think the size is really.
Does it mean?
Like a garage.
Yeah, that, I mean, that's.
It's cheap space.
Bathroom is still a bathroom until my client's at a hundred square of bathroom or four hundred square of bathroom. It's not gonna cost four times the amount, because it's four hundred bigger.
It's still me that's.
Shower.
And it would be useful to have those developers here at these kinds of discussions rather than waiting for some enormous forum, so that we could have a back and forth conversation.
Yeah, it, it goes to some of the other ordinance we talked about bringing in architect like Ben, who is wrong.
Yeah.
I agree.
I wonder if it's more of an, it's. I can see where.
It's always a good, it's always like, oh, what's happening?
I don't think you really want to do that. Just listen to him.
That's a great idea.
I bet you you get more people when you think if there's a way to.
I bet you, I mean, what if, I mean, let's think about whether we get public comment in general. You can give it to us in writing, you can give it to us in person. Right, if it suits you, if you want to give us something in writing about it in advance, great. If you would rather come to the meeting and talk to us, we also.
How successful was?
Wildly unsuccessful. Um, with the focus group of developers, yeah, I, I, the focus group of developers we ran, um.
It's wildly.
Yeah, how many were there?
Uh, there were one, two, three. We had three, maybe, I'm, maybe four developers show up to it. They, it was not productive because in, I will, I guess I'm gonna say. What they wanted to talk about was not. When they came in, all of the discussion questions that were prepared and what Jeff Davis was prepared to discuss with them about, they said, all of that sounds great, fine, please, yes, and thank you. We have another bone of contention we want to pick with you tonight about development within the town of South, in Kings Town, and that is where the rest of the conversation.
Well.
So we didn't end up with anything that was directly useful for us in this project. We, there were lessons learned in other considerations.
And you should be prepared for.
Yeah.
You should be able to say, hey, if you want to pitch about.
Something else, we'll let you do that for a little bit, and then we're gonna get some information for you on what we need to.
Yep, and so in reality, um, I was not in the focus group, which was sort of intentional, right? We wanted to share that. A little, a little bit of a distance away from the developers' focus group, so that there wasn't any. Concern that. Anybody shaped the direction of that too strongly, right?
Yeah, but I bet you we could grow better.
Yeah, potentially.
And we've heard from probably at least three, unfortunately, is during the public hearing process of a project, but that would speak indefinitely about this, the affordable housing and the deed restriction and the monitoring authority and, you know, I mean, you know, the difficulties that they have.
Yeah, I think the thing to do is to ask them to either give us something, thoughts on writing, if they want to, or ask them to come to us. Um, I think that their. The focus group was sort of a one-time shot, and it ended up largely being a referendum on utility development in South Kings Town and not related to policy on housing market. When it came to the policy on housing, we're, we left all the questions, said, all that sounds great, and yes, sure, we would, whatever you all would be interested in letting us build more of, we would be interested in building affordable.
The one thing that's missing from here is the, um. So, you know, then you. Handing. The discussions on affordability, we talked about, you know, affordability, we're gonna get with all the thirty, but, uh, so, uh, that's, I think that's also one of the, uh, support issues. I know, I think it's important, people are, uh, buying it, that's why, so that's why I'm kind of, I'm just.
I'll also tell you something else, right, about that. Depending on who your monitoring agent is, a thirty-year deed restriction restarts every time a property.
Resold?
Or does not.
That's terrible.
Yeah, there's a lot of inconsistency depending on what the monitoring agent is, because there's not a.
That's the first time I heard of that, I, I just figured it was thirty years from the. And this is the democracy when they.
Usually you think thirty years from the date, from the, from the first execution of it. Depending on who your monitoring agent is, or monitoring agents I work with in the state will tell you, and if you sell the unit, that restarts another thirty-year restriction on the new property owner.
It's not because of the.
Who's monitoring, monitoring agency?
That's crazy, that starts all, you know, you don't have to pay your agent, you want to sell it, so you can't sell that.
Say it's a thirty-year deed restriction, and if that's sold five times in that thirty-year window, so be it. At the end of the thirty years, the commitment's over.
That's what I, that's, that's how I assume that.
Is it Rhode Island Housing that puts a little monitoring company decision, I think, there? In charge of making meetings?
Like, a monitoring agent has to be qualified with Rhode Island Housing as a monitoring agent. They do not, to my knowledge, have a very clear set of how the policies go forward.
We were talking about.
Standards and what people, what's their income, like, who makes all these rules?
Rhode Island, Rhode Island Housing that says, what qualifies for a little monitoring company? Who makes that rule?
It's gonna be some law regulation, right?
No, it's prob, it isn't, it's just thirty years, it's, I mean, in general, it's a thirty-year time bomb waiting to explode when you get out there to thirty years. You have to, since, suddenly you got thirty years from the first, and you're going backwards.
Who's the agency that runs this, like, is it Rhode Island?
Rhode Island Housing.
To an extent, yes.
But not in the sort of way they picture it.
Because, because they're, they're, they're a multifaceted, they're a multifaceted agency. They, they run it partly with their policies, but then they also provide funding for it, and they're also involved with the State House of Appeals Board, so they, they kind of have that multiple issues. They, it's really, I found, the nonprofits that have really taken a more aggressive thing in saying, I mean, the best one, I think, is Church Community Housing, which puts ninety-nine year restrictions. So.
Instead of the thirty.
So, ninety-nine year restrictions are also more financeable than like a purchase. The bank can look at thirty years and say, oh, that's not long enough, that's still a lease, that's a restriction. Ninety-nine years, okay, this is what it is over ninety-nine years. So, and more and more of them are, as you're saying, having the renewable one, writing it in that it renews. But a lot of the ones, earlier ones, did not, they just expired. So the stuff that went in the nineteen nineties, we're seeing a lot of that.
Well, we had the Grossi Brothers who did a residential compound, they had family members who were all pre-qualified, and then mysteriously, none of the monitoring agencies were willing to work with them.
I, you know, I've been looking at the, 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 a little bit more about, uh, I, my understanding, talking to a couple of monitoring agencies, it had to do with it not being an arming sale. And because it not being an arming sale, it went against their practices for how they work or whatnot. Put someone in. And so at least to some degree, some people who've said no to doing that, did it with. That is sort of their, at least in public basing, was in force in this. Um, but yes, there's. There, there are one thousand ways that the entirety of affordable housing integration becomes various to. And I, there are at least a few monitoring agents in this city who are trying to work it, um, help with a more systematic way, that's a little bit more of a rule book, best practices book for monitoring agents on what you should be doing, what you shouldn't. When to count assets, when to not, how, how all of these things, I sort of change case by case, could be a little bit more standardized for people, but, um, that's. Use of accessory dwelling units. We have on the list, off-site, off-site unit provisions and moving piece of process. That was honestly like coming up with a sheet for how to, you know, when you're coming in, this is what you need to do. Um, so those are the ones that we'll sort of try and.
Any further comments from anybody on this particular line item? All right, so, we had ten of ten, it's ten of ten right now. Um, next agenda item, and I think what, the handout that was earlier distributed, that I distributed and asked Kayla to put together, I thought to discuss the deficiency inventory, we're gonna talk about parking, they've seen it so late, I'm gonna defer that. Um, and I think I'm just gonna defer number four unless somebody has a real pressing lead or comment that goes to something I've stumbled on recently within the ordinance that is, needs to be addressed. And if not, then, you know, it's, you know, we've gone ten after ten of ten. Uh, why don't we go to the planning board, raise on activities?
I have a couple of things. Um, the first one was, um, this fall, um, the Southern New England Planning Association, um, conference. And the, um, session that I attended, that was most useful to me, and this would be better if we, um, had access to their website, but it's something that everybody should check out. Um, so, Somerville, Mass, um, did a, they started in twenty-ten with a plan called Summer Vision twenty-thirty. Um, they actually worked on that and then developed a new process in twenty-nineteen, and it's now Summer Vision twenty-forty. But they, they did some really unique, creative things, and granted, although they have probably three times the population of South Kings Town, a lot of the issues were the same, very similar issues. They developed, um, a committee with different working groups, and it was everything across the board, community development, uh, climate and sustainability, um, arts, governance, housing, public space and natural environment, transportation and infrastructure, youth and education. They created these, um, called Somerville Stories in nine different neighborhoods. Um, they had a conference that was like a two-day conference and had, um, over seventy people each day. They had group presentations and activities, they talked about values and equities, um, lessons learned, um, zoning and place types, um, many ideas came, came out from this. They created an online card game with a deck of proposed metrics. It's really cool, I mean, you have to go to the website to truly appreciate what was done. They, uh, many resources, they had a whole section on resources, um, a data primer, um, they, they did Somerville by design to promote economic development while maintaining, um, the qualities in their squares and in their neighborhoods. They also created, and, um, when they were talking about food systems, they created an app that people could take photos and send, um, ideas and, uh, their own stories through their phone. Just, I, I, I would urge everybody to look at, I, I was so inspired by those folks. And I felt as though, yes, the population was larger, the town was larger, they had more planners, but they, it's still all very, very similar to the things that we're trying to do. And, and I just thought they were really, um, just super creative and had a great, um, great response from many diff- different sectors within the public. I mean, they had foreign language issues as well, um, but definitely worth, and if you look under, well, there's Summer Vision twenty-forty, if you look under process, there are several different, um, that's kind of a timetable, but they're different. You can see, um, the dropdown menu for process and for resources, totally worth looking at. And I'm sure that we will continue, although we're getting to the end of our, our comprehensive plan. They did a complete zoning rewrite, but, um, very well done.
Yeah, I'm familiar with, uh, they did a TOD, Transportation Oriented Development Project, that was really nice. Took advantage of a lot of, uh, transport and transit, and, says everything?
The card game, and those little squares, sorry.
So I've heard one of their presentations on the TOD, uh, very impressive, so I, I really, I, they, they really got a lot of fire.
It's a piece where they went to like a farmer's market or a community meeting and, like, had people, like, writing, like, things they cared about and were taking photos and, like, posting them. And I thought about how set, like, what a simple way that people's point that they were saying, visible, right? We all, like, nowadays, people are, exactly, we're all so visually oriented that they, they sort of were having these discussions and they kind of got a call to farmer's market, it's somewhat similar.
They do, and festivals, farmers' markets.
Yeah, and they were, they were sort of out on the ground with the booth, saying, like, "What matters to you?", and taking pictures of people in mind, right?
So simple and so incredibly easy.
Anybody else at least, Joe? Item six, update on lead-
Actually, can I, I'm sorry.
Yes?
Well, I was trying to remember what it was. I had gone to a meeting that I had invited Kayla and Jay-2, um, that had to do with aquaculture. And it was municipalities and aquaculture, um, farmers coming together from different municipalities. And I went as part of my, my day job as a, as a South Kingstown planning board member. Anyway, so, um, it was really interesting because, um, talking, having the aquaculture people speak to amongst themselves, but then to the municipalities to say, "How could things be better?". And the table I was sitting at was with, um, Mary Ganson. So there was, um, who else was, I don't remember, who else was there? I mean, there was aquacultures from South Kingstown, but Mary Ganson, they also had, um, the harbor master, assistant harbor master, different people. What it came about was that salt pond, the differences in the management of salt pond from Harbor Patrol to the way we comment aquaculture, to the signage that they require in South Kingstown on a farm versus Mary Ganson, it's all very different. And the aquaculture guy was saying, "This is really screwed." You know, and, and it was interesting, so I, I just really encouraged us, I'll pull, I'll get the notes out and I can share it with, with all of you, I think I might share it with Kayla and Jay. But I think that it made me realize how some of these areas that are very much jointly used by the public or by businesses, um, we have a line down the middle, um, and it's really kind of confusing for people. So, um, everything, um, I never knew that I could hijack it between, you know, some of these things and some of the other things. And then it ends up that in some towns, you put up, put, you know, it's, uh, the way that the buoys are, are put in South Kingstown versus Newport versus other places, sometimes it might be more apparent that I can hijack it there versus other towns. So, um, anyway, I think that it's something that's really, while we don't deal with harbor issues, um, necessarily, I thought it was really interesting, once again, to share borders with Mary Ganson with Charles Town. And we've talked about that in terms of flood drains, in terms of evacuation, where we might really need to, uh, neighbors. So, it's, it's interesting.
I think the irony on that one is from a emergency management perspective, they can, uh, because that's their primary purpose, correct?
Right.
So I'm gonna decide watershed planning.
What's that?
So I'm gonna need watershed planning, because, yeah.
Our harbor management is out of state, so we do need to spruce that up. Only when it gets spruced up, we can talk a little more with Mary Ganson and, uh, we can-
I'm surprised Bowie didn't, in the harbor design, isn't regulated by the state. I was really surprised too. It was, it was, no, towns have real, you know, the, the states said, "We've tried", and the towns have not. I mean, I'm shocked that that-
Now, now that you say that-
Yeah, we, we do.
For sailing, totally different with the buoys and the markers from James Town, Newport, Wickford.
So we won a case.
Is it a good one that we won?
I don't know, that depends on your opinion of it. This is regarding, um, the Metunic Oyster Bar, the property, the Marina across the street. You approve, and the design turned basically to, um, tear down the shack and put the fish hatchery in and have the valet park the lot. And the zoning board granted the variance, and then that was appealed to the Superior Court. Superior Court just recently ruled in favor of the town upheld the decision of the zoning board. The underlying, um, planning board approval had never been appealed to this zoning board variance. And it was only the variance about the parking lot that was appealed.
So what is, and refresh my memory then, so if it was purely on the parking, would it be due to his, Harry Lasso's parking?
Well, it gives him this valet lot, it gives him seventy spaces in the Marina, he uses a valet parking for the restaurant. It's a principal use of parking lot.
Remember, yeah, there were reuses on-
Was that the basis they used to try to stop the movement? Well, that was all they appealed, there were other variances at the dimensions, but those are mostly pre-existing dimensional markings. So, the real relief was the parking, and he said it was a release relief necessary because the Marina had thirty-seven spaces, and we're gonna give you thirty-nine spaces now, and you don't really, and, uh, the appeal was on that basis. We have four spaces just for the move, for folks that live in areas. In the argument, it was kind of a self-created hardship to create this parking lot use without putting the parking spaces to be existent. It's interesting because the judge commented that quoted the, when the objectors testified, they were complaining about all the problems with the parking, with the overflow traffic on Suckett Ash Road, and they were fighting an additional parking lot. I think that irony is not bad, so, I'm glad.
Um, any, any, any updates?
I do have also two other things. There's a training, I know most of you've done the training, there's a all-day session on Saturday, March fourteenth. C C R I, right? No, it's-
Some press.
No, it's, um, it's, uh, is it Rhode Island College?
It's at Rick, yes, it's at Rhode Island College, sorry. It's the statewide historic preservation conference, at the end of April, that's at C C R I. That's right. This is at Rick, um, it's through Growth Smart, um, and I, I know more about it because I volunteered. I'm gonna be teaching several things. Basically going to be the two basic courses, conducting effective land use reviews and writing sound decisions will be given. Each one will be given in the morning, and each one will be given again in the afternoon. So there'll be opportunities, so you could, like, get the whole thing at once. And then at three o'clock in the afternoon, there's this Citizen One-O-One Public Participation Class, which is being sort of piloted. Can't tell you too much about that because we're still working on it, or they're still working on it, and I got it, I haven't reviewed it yet. We're gonna be meeting Thursday to work on it, something like that. But if you want the basic training, conducting effective land reviews, if you want a refresher, or if you want, um, if you happen to get into one of the others, feel free to come here. It's free, and they give you breakfast.
It's still, it's still warm out, but you're supposed to take a class, one class every two years, did that pass?
No, it didn't pass last year. That's actually part of the reason I was at the General Assembly before I came down here, because it's been introduced again and it was at the Senate Judiciary Committee. They technically held it because they just reintroduced the same law without the minor changes that we had suggested last year, so we again suggested the minor changes this year, and they were receptive to it, so, uh- It'll probably move forward again through Senate Judiciary, and who knows where it'll end up. But I think it's eventually got a good chance of an answer.
I think it might work, I'll say, is it?
Yeah.
Probably, um, the last time we talked about the property is-
It's still in?
Oh, um-
Can we approve if there's something about exhibit or such?
Yes, you mean, um, Fiore's Home and this up there, yes. I don't, well, I don't know, was it public hit, we made it public hit?
So there, there's still, like, there's nothing to be reported on it yet, that's-
Right. We're, we're trying to work on a settlement. I don't know, for those of you who were here at the time, if you remember, it was pretty close to being acceptable. If they were willing to have gotten rid of a few more units, it would have probably been approved. So we are working on a settlement now. I believe they, well, I don't wanna say anything, I'm not sure of the details, but, but I think it's close to being settled, and it would be an ex- it's an acceptable settlement, it's not a surrender.
It's been out there for a while.
Yes, well, they just, they, they never pursued it, they just sat on it.
Okay, um, we have a line adding for comments from interested citizens, but as I look around, do you not see them?
Nobody's calling in.
Oh, yes, Fieldstone, yes, actually, um, Amy just sent an email. The brief from Bill Landry is a couple of days overdue, um, but Steve Richard, who's the lawyer for Shapson, Bill Landry's computer problems, and he's expecting the file by the end of the week. So, and we'll be filing our deal, five dates after whenever he does his brief, we'll file our, so, moving forward. Moving forward slowly.
They're just asking for-
Right, yes. Well, they asked for the briefs a long time ago, and, and basically, again, it was kind of Bill Landry just sitting on it, not doing it. I mean, I was at a meeting in September on another case, representing another town, but with Bill Landry. But they were asking that, what about the briefs, and, yeah, okay, fine, we agree, how much time do you want? That's fine, yep, okay, we're all set, but then, nobody ever followed through with it. And our, our general rule is, you know, on these sort of things is not to push it, delay is in our favor. As we used to say at the first circuit court of deals, justice delayed his justice for half our people.
Can I get a adjourn sommel?
All right, second.